Item number 15, that was a motion and approval, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Item 15, which was consideration of the travel, this is in regard to item E. County Judge, Department of Transportation Director and Assistant traveled to Austin, Texas. That was to visit with transportation officials under the Governor's Office. Pete, you want to discuss what happened today?
Yesterday and today, we traveled, County Judge, myself, my assistant, the Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Brownsville Navigation District, the Mayor of the City of San Benito, the City Manager from San Benito, a representative from the City of Harlingen, a representative from the County Judge's Office from Nueces County, a representative or the Assistant Port Director from the Port of Corpus Christi. Met with Techstat officials to discuss probably the highest priority or our highest priority in our transportation agenda. And we had about a one-hour meeting with Techstat. It was an excellent meeting. We came away with a game plan on what we need to do for the next nine months. We've got a plan of action as to the exact things that need to occur between now and September so that we can be in a position to push forward with that project at a state level and at a local level. Following that meeting, we met with the Chief of Staff of Governor Perry. We went over the major transportation projects that were working in the Cameron County region. We talked about our international bridge projects and future international bridge projects at the county, at the Port of Brownsville. We talked about our rail relocation projects that we have in Brownsville, that we have in the Harlingen area. We talked about the different funding sources that we could utilize to complete the North Rail relocation project by passing Harlingen and San Benito. And we talked about other transportation projects throughout the county. And so, following that meeting, we went and made our visits to the delegation from Cameron County. We were with Senator Lucio, with Representative Lucio. We saw Congressman Salomo Ortiz. We also met very briefly with Senator Inahosa from the Hidalgo County area. So it was a very, very successful trip. Chairman of the Port is here. I don't know if you want to add anything else, but we did have the entire county, all the entities from the county represented. And I think, like, as I mentioned, we've got a plan of action of what we're going to do. We're going to utilize the RMA as a vehicle to implement the plan of action that we have for the next nine months. And we'll be keeping the different entities abreast as we move forward on this project.
Is that the action plan you're talking about requiring any monetary funds from anyone?
It will, but we're putting that together. And once we have that, then the RMA will be the one going to the different entities and requesting that funding from the entities. But everybody that was at the meeting represented, from Nueces County down to Brownsville, were very supportive of the project. And I think, you know, it was an excellent meeting. For staff, it's going to, it means a lot of work for the next nine months, but I think it's the project that's going to change the transportation network system in Cameron County. And, you know, we talked, the Chairman of the Port, when we were meeting with the Governor, the Chief of Staff, you know, talked about the fact that we need to look at this as, we need to look at the global picture and see what the economic benefits for Cameron County is going to be, because this project's going to impact, you know, not only Cameron County, but internationally into Mexico and Canada. So, we've got a great plan of action and, you know, I guarantee you that the RMA will implement it and we'll get it done.
Very good. Any other questions, Mr.?
Well, we need any kind of agreement with the RMA as far as the county's concerned or the other entities?
Yeah, we'll, you know, we probably will, but all those, you know, kinks will be, will be worked out by the RMA.
Periodically, perhaps?
Periodically, perhaps?
Yes.
In the agreements?
Yes.
When is the RMA meeting again?
Our next meeting is this Thursday at 2:00, and we're going to meet at the City Hall in Rancho Viejo.
The new city hall?
The new city hall.
Anything else?
It is.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Oh, do I hear a motion to approve the travel that we already did? Item E. Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Tomayo, all in favor? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 16, presentations. Presentation by Leinbarger, Goggan, Blair and Sampson Law Firm regarding delinquent property tax quarterly report. Tony, is that your item?
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. This particular report is done quarterly and it should have been done on December the 19th, but it was tabled and placed it on the agenda for your, for your review. And today, I have John Givada from the law firm to do the report to the court. John?
Thank you, Tony. Judge Costco, Commissioners, members of the community, it's a pleasure to be before you. My name is John Givada. I'm an attorney in the local office here in Brownsville. I'm here tonight with Erisao Vega and Rick Pena, members of our, of our staff here in Brownsville. We're pleased to report that this last fiscal year's collections exceeded $1.9 million or 31% of the delinquent tax roll. Our collection plan for the county is centered around working with the taxpayer and using litigation as a, as a final option. Our report here begins with our property inspections. Throughout the year, we analyze the tax roll and look to see what properties need inspection. Our property inspection team makes a great effort to, to talk to the taxpayers, to try to get their delinquency resolved, either through full payment, payment arrangements. We also talk to them about any exemptions that they may be, they may qualify for. This past fiscal year, we conducted almost 1,600 onsite inspections. We focused heavily on, on going door-to-door on the, the properties that we had targeted. The collection program also includes mailings. This past fiscal year, we conducted eight mailings on behalf of the county. The county does not pay for any of these mailings. The law firm takes care of all postage, everything associated with the mailings. Throughout this last fiscal year, over 123,000 pieces of mail were, were targeted to delinquent taxpayers in the county. And on page two, you can see the mailing month. On the bottom of page two is a summary of our litigation activity the last fiscal year. We had 418 suits that were filed seeking to collect 882,000 in base tax. We had 80 non-suits that were, non-suited because they were paid. We had 103 judgments. We, we, at the end of the year, we had 60 cases that were trial-ready and pending petitions. We had 530 at the end of the fiscal year totaling $1.2 million to the county. The pending petitions include those cases that have been filed, we're waiting on service of process to all interested parties, including lien holders, and/or we're waiting for court dates to be set.
John, on your pending petitions, is that pretty much in the same number as in the past?
It's actually more.
It's more, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. On page three, at the very top, you see a collection comparison, the delinquent tax collection comparison for the last three years. As you can see, this past fiscal year, we exceeded the previous year, and each of the last three years, we've done better than the previous year. This amounted to just over $1.9 million to the county in base tax alone and an additional $342,000 in interest. Roughly, it's about, just under $350,000 more in base tax than the previous year. On the bottom of page three, you see a tax sales summary. We conducted four property tax sales, seeking to dispose of 94 properties. Of those 94, roughly, well, not roughly, 42 were sold for $102,000 in base to the county. We had 10 that were paid pri, just prior to sale totaling almost $40,000. We entered into payment arrangements with 17 of those properties, property owners, for another $50,000. The fourth category is struck off category, is struck off properties. Those are properties that, where bids were not received, they were struck off to Cameron County as trustee on behalf of the county and the other taxing entities. Those properties, we will attempt to sell those at a tax resale, and those will be presented to, the bids that are received will be presented to Commissioners' Court for their approval of those, those bids that are received or, or consideration, actually, of the bids that are received.
That's an awfully big percentage of, of the struck off.
Yes, it's, it's a big one. It's, some of these are attempts to, they're, they're pieces of property that people didn't want to bid on at, at the beginning. There are taxes that are owed, a considerable number or amount of taxes that are owed. Some of these properties are really bad shape. It will, but there's, there's, we will attempt to sell them again. On page four, you have a snapshot of the first quarter of this present fiscal year. So far, we've conducted two mailings, November and December of 2006, whereby 32,000 pieces of correspondence were sent out on behalf of Cameron County, again at no cost, to the county. The litigation summary for that time period includes 137 cases that were filed. We had 18 paid that were non-suited. Judgments were 37. We have 63 at this time trial-ready and pending petitions through December amount to 678 or $1.2 million in base tax. Again, these pending petitions, we're conducting additional research or waiting for service to be conducted to all interested parties, including lien holders, or we're waiting for a trial date to be set. On the bottom of page four, you see a collection comparison of the first quarter of each of the last four years. You can see that we are just under where we were last year. Last year, we collected 616,000 or 9.72 of the DTR, delinquent tax roll. As, as, as of the time of this printing, we were at 8.89% or 595,000, but in actuality, we ended with 9.07 or 607,000. So we're, money-wise and percentage-wise, we are about equal with the record year that we had last year. As far as a work plan that we have for the county, we will again place heavy emphasis of working with the taxpayer to resolve the tax debt, reserving litigation for a final option. We review pending judgments and filing of additional lawsuits. We had targeted 143 suits to be filed this next quarter. We've worked with the Taxpayer Collector's Office. We're planning on filing approximately 100 of these 143 next week. We will continue to monitor bankruptcy accounts. This is a standard operation for us. We, we monitor all bankruptcies on behalf of the county. We file the proof of claims and we meet with the creditors and we follow those through to conclusion. We will dispose, make an effort to dispose of the pending suits. We have targeted 183 of these pending suits for final judgment and preparation for tax sale. We will continue accounting mailing programs similar to what we did last year. We're considering, considering adding another mailing to the list and another specialized mailing for business personal property. We have scheduled property tax sales for March, June, August and November of next year. If we have a fifth one, it will be in September. These do not include the resales. The resales will be additional sales that we'll have. If you recall, about two years ago, we came before the court and asked them if we could do this one big sale per year of the resales. So we did one per year. We, we did two this past year, and we anticipate doing three this coming year. That is our report. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
John, can you go to number three, your final disposition of pending suits? Could you tell me, más o menos, let's say, what would be the timeline for maybe 50% of, of that being cleared up?
Well, it, it's very difficult to, to put a timeframe on it. A lot of times, when we file a suit, that's all that's needed to collect the tax. In other words, we've gone through, talking to the taxpayer, we've gone through the mailings, they responded, they have it paid. We finally have to file a suit, and that gets our attention, so a lot of those are non-suited, they're paid. The other thing that we have is, a lot of the courts are not in session most of December. So we had a lot of pending suits during that. This activity really is October, November's activity. So it would, it would all be based on service of process and, and the setting of the, of the court dates by the judge.
Any other questions by a member of the court?
I see if I understand this correctly. On the tax sales, the struck off?
Yes, ma'am.
You say that you'll bring these properties back for resale?
Yes.
Okay. What, what do you, do you attribute this to? I mean, you already told us it's because the properties are in bad shape. Do you think that you're just not getting a bid because they figure they can wait at a later date, get a, a lower price on them? Is that what happens?
That, that could, that could be a strategy. However, if it's, if it's a piece of property that somebody wants, they're taking a chance on someone else bidding, so they, you know, our tax sales have been pretty successful. Three years ago, two, two years ago, actually, we, we had one tax sale per year, and that was in July. Over the last couple of years, we've had a, a number of sales which, and we're required to advertise those sales. We've probably gone from advertising eight or nine times a year for that one tax sale to almost 36 to 40 advertisements promoting all our present tax sales. So we believe that that has helped foster more purchasers at our tax sale, and that's been very evident. We've had people there. So they're, they're being advertised, but we can't force them to bid on the properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I've got a few questions. When you talked about the collections were comparable to prior years, how do our collections compare to what we budget every year?
Well, our delinquent tax collections are, are high. They're, they're comparable. I believe Mr. Yates would have the...
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, if, if we're budgeting 94, 95, whatever the percentage is, I want to know, the dollars are nice, but it doesn't tell me anything if we, I don't have anything to compare it to as far as we're short, over.
Well, what you're talking about in the 94.5 are the current...
That's current, that's correct.
Current collections.
That's why I just use that, throwing out there. I don't know what your percentage is.
Okay.
And how does that compare to what we budget every year?
We, we, do you want to talk about your budget?
Up until the 2002, 2006, 2007 budget, we were, up until that point in time, we were budgeting 95 and a half percent of current tax collections.
How much?
94 and a half percent. Now, you know, tables that show exact dollar amounts will go up every year because the tax levy's higher and the delinquent balance raises each year. Two years ago, we were about 4.2 in delinquent tax uncollectible, and now we're at $6.7 million of uncollected as of October 1st. We typically look at the rate of collection for delinquent taxes and budget approximately 30%. Two years ago, 2004, 2005 and 2005, 2006, we were a little short, or 2003 and 2004, the prior two years, prior to the end of this year, we were short on our delinquent tax collections. We were right at 30% for 2005 and 2006, and what was achieved was 31.12% of the delinquent tax balance. But if you'll produce a bar chart of what they collect, every year will be higher if they collect 30%, and it's been 28% and change, ranging from 28% of collections to about 31.12 is where we were last year.
Let me ask the question again. How does our, the collections, the delinquent collections compare to what we budget in revenue? That's what I wanted to know.
In 2005 and 2006, I believe we either met or exceeded delinquent tax collections.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
That's the bottom line.
And do you...
That is a bottom line.
That's what I want to know.
Do you use a percentage or a number?
We typically use a percentage to arrive at a number.
And the percentage you use is what, 30?
30.
30%?
Right.
Of delinquent taxes is what you use?
Right. We try to guesstimate what, and we come up with these numbers at the end of July, and at the end, we try to guess what the outstanding receivable will be at September 1, September 30th. And we say, well, whatever we think that number will be, well, we think we're going to collect 30%.
So it would be safe for me to assume that you're going to use 94.5%?
This year...
Collection rate for regular collections and 30% for delinquent collections? Is that a safe assessment or assumption?
The assumption for 30% on delinquent tax collections was good this year. We dropped the collection rate from 94.5 to 94 because...
This year?
For this year, we're in now.
For '06, '07.
Right. Because we did not meet our current tax collection rate target of 94.5. We were at 93 and...
2.6, is that correct?
93.9. We didn't even achieve the 94%.
Okay. Then I have a question for John. In regards to not meeting the 94.5%, last year, we committed as a Commissioners' Court to give you an extra 5% penalty right fee increase because you were going to utilize that extra 5% that would help you better staff your office and increase collections. But as a result of that, we actually had a decline in collections.
We did increase the collections on the delinquent. The current, the current taxes, we need to work with your Taxpayer Collector to achieve your 94 or 94.5 goal. We do not get those accounts. We cannot start working on those accounts until July 1st. Your, your fiscal year ends September 30th. So basically, we can't touch those till July 1st. Now, there are some, if we, if we have cases...
Our fiscal year ends, what'd you say?
September 30th.
September 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You cannot touch the delinquent accounts till...
We cannot, the night, the, the accounts that are in the 94.5?
Right.
We cannot touch until July 1st.
Okay.
Because they're, they're not delinquent. We're your, we're your delinquent tax collectors. However, that doesn't stop us from helping the Taxpayer, the Taxpayer's Office in collecting those. If we have cases in suit from January 1st to that July 1st, we can include the 2000, I mean, we can include the, that year's current delinquents. In other words, people's taxes are delinquent on February 1st of each year. So starting on February 1st, if we have something in litigation, we're, let's say we're going, we're, we have something in litigation that includes 2005, 2004, 2003, and they're still delinquent on 2006, we can include those in 2006 because we have, we already have something in litigation. That's the only way we can touch those current, they're called current delinquents, before July 1st. Otherwise, we cannot touch them.
My question, and I think Mark answered, just so I can get off that, my first item. The 94% represents the collection rate of current ad valorem, and I'm not really concerned with that one right now, but I'm concerned about whether what we budget as delinquent tax collections, and you've said that it's meeting or exceeding the amount that we've, we budgeted in the '05, '06, because you've already finished '06. So at that point, you know what your delinquent tax collections were for the '05, '06 year. So my question was simple. Did we meet or exceed the delinquent tax collection?
You exceed, we exceeded the collection.
Okay.
31.?
31.12.
Well, but that 31% doesn't tell me anything because I don't know what you budgeted. Did you budget 31.2% of delinquent? That's, I want dollars, not so much percentages.
Well, the budget was 30.
Okay, 30% so...
Of your delinquent tax roll.
We went 1.5.
Okay. So then you exceeded what we budgeted in the '05, '06 budget in terms of revenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mark, is that correct?
We hit the current targets of 30%. The exact dollar amount, I will provide to you. I don't have them...
No, but as long as we met it, that's okay. Whatever is budgeted, was budgeted.
My recollection is it was approximately 30% of what we, what we budgeted, and we came close. You know, percentages one way or the other. We're talking about tenths of a percentage.
All right.
So I, I think we're real close, one way or the other. I don't have the exact number memorized, but typically 30% is where we look.
All right. Thanks, Mark. How many accounts considered to be delinquent do we have in total? How many are out there? Must, you know, roughly? I hate to put you on the spot. I mean, I just, I mean, because, because we're looking at these graphs about all these things that we've done, but I don't have a clear picture. If we have, you know, 400,000 accounts are delinquent, and we're, and we're doing 42 here, 100 here, 50 there, we're not making much of a dent. And that, and that's what I want to know, because I don't think that your report provided that.
You know, I'm trying to decipher kind of like the same thing. If 1.9 million is 31%, there's almost 70% that's uncollected in the delinquent accounts. And 70%, you know, just to extrapolate those numbers, you're looking at $4 to $5 million out there, right?
税的量，但 tax balance at October 1st is $6.7 million.
For this year?
Yeah, right.
For this year?
Well, that's, that's in total, counting all delinquent years.
That's correct. But I just want to know how many accounts are out there that are delinquent? I mean, within a thousand, okay?
Judge, we're looking at around 15,000 viable, viable accounts. We get, I think they're, we have 35,000, give or take. But those are, every little account generated, it's one penny to a million dollars, you can generate a dollar. But my idea is now we have an idea of actually allowing us to include a amount of dollars, five dollars, highs and lows. They're not a bankruptcy, they're not deferred, they're RMA.
Okay. Coupled with that, it kind of led me into my next question. Do you all have an aging where you show how many accounts we have based on years and what those accounts in dollars represent?
Yes.
If you do have that, I'd, I'd like to have you provide that to the court at some point. Do you have a breakdown, coupled with that aging, where you show like from a dollar to $50,000 in delinquencies, how many accounts, 50,001 to 100,000, how many accounts, and, you know, so on and so forth? If you could provide that to us as well? I'd appreciate that. Because your report's real nice, but we have nothing to, I have nothing to compare it to in terms of whether you're being productive, efficient or not, without knowing what the whole scope is. What Mr. Pena said right now was that there's 15,000 viable accounts. Does that mean that you're only trying to collect the viable accounts, but there's another 16,000 or 17,000 accounts out there that you've determined are not viable, therefore there's no effort being made to collect those? And of those 17,000 or 16,000 accounts that are out there, how much in dollars does that represent of that six-point-something million dollars that, that the auditor just said we had?
I can get you...
Can you provide that to us?
We can get you a breakdown on that.
We can also give you, to further, we can give you a breakdown how our collections, by years, they're like, so you can get an idea of where the money's... They're typically in the first three years, like, you know, this, this past fiscal year, the first three years of the bulk of the collections, but we can also generate a report showing you where the years...
Your report is very informative, but it gives us a snapshot of what just you did. Tells, it tells us all the good stuff, but I want to know the other stuff. I want to know how many accounts are out there. Give me an aging schedule as to, you know, the dollars they represent, how many accounts are out there, just so we have an idea of how efficient you're doing, okay? And, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I would like to see included in that where or what type of tax is delinquent? Whether it be property tax, prop, you know, personal, you know, whatever. Break it down by categories.
Business personal property and real property.
Right.
And the real property involves obviously land, houses...
Right.
And building-only accounts...
Right.
That are not business personal property. It's broken into two.
Yes, that would be nice.
And perhaps also showing how long they've been delinquent.
Right.
It'll break it down.
That's, that's, okay.
Can we have that tomorrow? Now, give you 30 days or so? Can you have that for us?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What you got, sir?
I have another question. We have a current contract with you, and we're, I'm trying to ask the right questions because I don't want to go into a situation like we have been on some of the health contracts that we've had out there. Can you inform me as to what the contract is, what the, you know, the current timelines are on the contract and things like that?
Right now, we have a three-year contract with the county that expires in August of 2007.
August of 2007? Why would it expire in 2007 if May 31st or June 1st is when you get the accounts?
July.
Or Jul, well, yeah, 30... Or, well, yeah, thirty days after, yeah, July first.
That's only-
Because if we have a contract with you, right, that would mean that you have really another year, in essence. Or am I reading wrong?
I'm not sure what you're-
Okay, you're telling me that we have a contract that expires in August of two thousand and seven, right? You normally get the delinquent accounts turned over to you on July first?
Correct.
So once you get the delinquent accounts, you really have a contract for the year, it would seem to me?
I couldn't answer why the commissioner's court at that time renewed the contract in August. I couldn't tell you.
Who can answer? Tony?
The last time the contract was awarded to the firm was July first of nineteen ninety-seven, and it expired June thirtieth of two thousand and two. Between two thousand and two and the day it was renewed, it was on a month-to-month. And I think what happened was some members of the court started asking questions why the law firm did not have a contract. So an agenda was placed on the, for the court, and the contract was signed on July first two thousand and two, I mean, on August, August thirty-first, two thousand and four, for three years, and expires August of two thousand and seven. That's why it's in August.
Yeah, but doesn't it make sense to have it through maybe June thirtieth?
No, it doesn't. It should have, it should be, the contract should expire before July
Or before, yeah.
Right, right. But that's the way the court approved the contract.
And I have a question. Do we, as a court, have to be checking when this, and it goes back to accountability, at this point, do we know who from the county is responsible for keeping up with when this contract ends? And, you know, we shouldn't have to be asking John. We should know that information. Somebody should be tracking it on our side. Is that you?
The court was made aware when the contract expired back in two thousand and two, and the court decided to go a month-to-month back when, and I think the minutes will show that.
Until two thousand and four?
Until-
Exactly.
Yeah, because I remember I brought that to the agenda.
Yes.
That's true.
Purchasing department and the auditor's office put together a agenda item back at the time mentioned to go out for professional services to deal with delinquent tax collections, financial advisors, and bond counsel, to reaffirm the relationships that either we all had or to reexamine the ones. The commissioner's court at the time did not want to address those issues altogether. So.
Something else to look at.
Well, I think that we should consider possibly looking at an RFQ or P or whatever letter we need to use after the RF to, you know-
We could think-
Yeah, to, you know, be as fair as we can to your firm and everyone else, you know? I mean, when I brought this up, one of the issues in two thousand and four that I had was I was told that you couldn't invest more in local effort because you didn't have a contract, or your firm did not have a contract. If you had a contract, you would be able to invest more dollars in personnel and equipment and compute, whatever it is you need to do your work. In two thousand and four, that's what I was told. And I pushed to make sure that you had a contract that extended more than just one month to the next, so that you could have that ability to do those things that needed to be done to increase collections. But the trend has been that we've had less collections, more dollar amounts, but less percentage. And I know that's, you know, not something you can answer to me, but it's just a concern that I have.
And is that because we're ignoring the ones that are the smaller amounts?
No, we're not. We target all the accounts. As a matter of fact, if you look at the property tax sales, if there are no bids, you can see that we're taking care of all the accounts, treating them all equally. Now, we don't ignore the top dollar, the top dollar. We look at, we continuously analyze the delinquent tax rule, both on a personal property basis and a real estate, a real property basis, to go after those large accounts, but we don't ignore the small ones.
Well, John, maybe once you provide us with the report that the judge has asked for, we can better look at the contract or-
Is there any, is there anything that would preclude us? I agree with Commissioner Gatsa. It doesn't make any sense to have an August thirty-first contract when the delinquent tax firm gets accounts July first. That contract should probably be expiring prior to significantly, maybe a month or two before that. Is there anything that would preclude us from, just so we get even somewhere, from soliciting requests for proposals or whatever we need to do now? I don't mean today, but I mean at some point in the next, the next two or three months, so we don't end up with this oddball year or oddball month of August thirty-first. Tony, is there anything that, and I don't know, I'm not suggesting that at this point. I just want to know. I want to have all the information. Is there anything to preclude us from doing that?
The contract that the law firm presently has has a thirty-day clause, and it also includes a sixty-day clause where they can continue doing their legal work on pending accounts. So if the court does decide, I would suggest that we do that within the thirty days and also to include the sixty days.
Tony, what day would, because I don't know, what day would you suggest that a contract of this nature end? I mean, would it be April thirtieth, May thirty-first, or how much time does a firm need to get ready for the next coming?
I would say between four to five months.
Okay, so if we're talking July first, and we're looking at doing something like when the next thirty to forty-five days?
I would think so, if the court wishes to do that. Of course, an agenda item would have to be placed to go out for RFPs, and of course, before that, the auditor's office or purchasing agent would have to put an RFP together and send it out to the law.
We used one in two thousand and four.
No, sir.
We didn't use an RFP in two thousand and four?
No, sir.
We just awarded a contract?
We just awarded the contract. The last time we used an RFP was February twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-seven.
Doggo County just went out for RFP, and another river county just went out for RFP. It'd be easy to start a new one with our requirements from their standpoint. Nineteen ninety-seven was the last time there was competitive process.
I just think that we need to get back on some kind of a schedule, and I think everyone's pretty much acknowledged that August is kind of an oddball-
Yeah.
-date to end a contract. It's got to be prior to, at a minimum, the July first. If you're talking about needing four months to go out for an RFP and award and get somebody ready, we're talking about issuing something late February at the latest, or even mid-March.
At least the court wishes, at least to go out for proposals and-
Or the other option is that if we know we're going to do that, we wait to do it the following year, way ahead of time, so we're not rushing into something, so they have, whomever it is, has a year to finish up, knowing that we're going to go out for RFPs. That's the other option. Or if the court elects, we can do it when the next thirty days, go out and do that. So, you know, we'll put something on, I guess, or we'll, whatever you all want to do.
And in all fairness to you all also, because if you've got sixty days to work litigation and thirty days to work regular accounts, it's really not fair for you to have to deal with those in a very short period of time. I mean, it doesn't make much sense.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge report of Leinbarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson? That was moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me take one item out of order. Mr. Chairman is from the port, is waiting here. Consideration, this item number twenty-eight, consideration and approval of payment of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Brownsville Navigation District for the original Brownsville rail relocation project. Pete?
Judge and commissioners, this issue goes back probably ten years or maybe a little bit longer than that. In the mid-nineteen seventies, city of Brownsville was one of several cities selected throughout the U.S. to have a demonstration project in relocating rail from urban areas to rural areas. And at that time, the federal government was, based on the transportation bill at that time, established a certain percentage that the federal government was going to pay, and a certain percentage that the local sponsor of the project was responsible for. In the mid-nineties, when a new transportation bill was passed by Congress, the formula was changed, and the percentage of a grant went down, it was reduced, and the local percentage, the local participation was increased. So consequently, and the Brownsville Navigation District was the sponsor of the original rail relocation project in Brownsville. So consequently, they were faced with a shortage of a little bit over a million dollars. And so the three entities, the Port of Brownsville, City of Brownsville, and Cameron County, got together and agreed to split the money in three so that they could make up the difference. The total that each entity was responsible for was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Port of Brownsville, you know, paid their money. The City of Brownsville acted upon it and also sent payment to the Port of Brownsville. Cameron County, for various reasons, never acted on it and never has made payment to the Port of Brownsville. My recommendation to the court, and I've met with the county auditor, and he has identified a funding source, my recommendation to the court is that we go ahead and approve payment in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Port of Brownsville. And also, maybe in that motion, authorize staff to negotiate with the port, maybe a two-year payment plan. Obviously, it's an item that was not budgeted. We do have sufficient funds, you know, for about two hundred thousand dollars that we could pay this year, and then the balance we can incorporate into our budget for next fiscal year. I think those terms would be acceptable to the Port of Brownsville, and I think it's an issue, like I said, that's been lingering for about ten years that we really need to resolve at this point. Chairman, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Judge Coscos, members of the commission, I thank you for inviting me here this evening, and I'm elated and excited just at the thought that it's been almost ten years since these monies have been owed to the Port of Brownsville. It's been almost eight months since I was elected as a port commissioner, and one of the first things that I came to find out was that all these monies were owed by the county to the Port of Brownsville. And initially, I gave authority to the folks at the port to contact the folks here at the county and express to them that we wanted to come back and talk about if we could get our monies back. Unfortunately, you know, almost six months passed, and then County Judge Coscos, after his election, I called him and congratulated him. And one of the first things that he said that he was going to try to bring closure to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was owed to the port by the county. That being said, you know, it's been almost eight months. Last week, I had a courtesy call from Commissioner Benavides, and I met with her in her office privately, and she as well extended and embraced the idea that we needed to come to this and bring closure to this. I, in turn, asked her that, you know, she could come to the Port of Brownsville, and we could put her on the agenda where we could introduce this, and she has accepted that as well. But she also wanted to make sure that she wants to make sure and bridge the gap that, because she represents the Port of Brownsville, she wants to make sure that she is there to help any way she can. This sets the stage for a collaborative atmosphere that has been missing for so long, and I can tell you that the folks at the Port of Brownsville are ecstatic just to hear that we have come together so that we can put closure on this and move forward. I happened to also travel with the folks today to go to Austin with the Transportation Department, that we met with Mr. Amadeo Sines up there in the governor's office. Let me tell you, folks, the community should be very well and embrace what is happening here with the county, because it's only been eight days that the judge has been in office, and because the commission and what his goals are, it sends a clear message that they want to work together with the county, I mean, for the community, for the benefit of the entire county, and I wholeheartedly embrace it, and I thank you so much, and the Port of Brownsville thanks you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gatsa?
Yes, I've been at the port meetings a number of occasions in the last few years and have had very good working relations on the issues that we were working on. But at the end of every meeting that I ever attended, it was always the, and when are you going to pay us the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know? But in spite of that, Mr. Chairman, you know, the port has been very cooperative in the projects that the county has had and which you have had involvement with, and for that I thank you. And that being said, you know, I would like to move to approve payment in the terms that Mr. Sepulveda discussed.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides. Discussion?
Judge, we've got two options, or the court has two options on the funding source.
Well, it's part of the discussion.
We can utilize either cash reserves from the Gateway Bridge, or we can utilize interest earned on the settlement money. And so either option.
You know, y'all can work that out. That was a rail relocation project, so y'all work that out as how best you can.
I'll get with the county auditor.
You want to do that? Commissioner Benavides?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for coming here. I had expressed to the county judge at our last meeting that I wanted to make sure that we worked with the entities of Brownsville and the Port of Brownsville. And I was glad to hear that we were able to come to an agreement and that we were going to move this county forward, and I intend to work very closely with you. Thank you.
All right, just to capsulize, that was a motion by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you.
I'll attend the meetings over there now when I'm more ready to discuss. I'll go with you, Sophie.
Okay.
When we deliver the check, you know, okay?
And the honeymoon continues. I love it. All right, item seventeen. Is there anything else that anybody wants to take out of order that needs to go, anybody need to scoot out? Which items do you have, Tony? Okay, let's do item twenty-four. Consideration, item twenty-four, consideration authorization to secure the back door entrance to the administrative building located by Van Buren Street?
Judge, commissioners, the district attorney and I and the county clerk, we got together sometime last week to discuss the security of the complex, and since the door in question has been installed with a system but never turned on or, we spent approximately about fifteen hundred dollars in securing the door in question, but for some reason or the other, the system was never activated, and we're requesting that this door be activated and pass keys be issued to key personnel to secure the building.
In your packet, you'll have a letter that has been submitted to us by- In your packet, you'll have a letter that has been submitted to us by our district attorney, Armando Villalobos, our county clerk, Joe G. Rivera, and our tax assessor-collector, Tony Seguero. So, any comments, any member of the court?
Well, I'd like to know why if we installed it, it's not being used. Again, we don't know.
Another mystery. I don't know why it was installed.
Why it was installed and it wasn't being used?
Oh, I have no idea.
Who paid for the installation? Was it your department, Tony?
I think Marcelino can answer that. His department was the one that installed it or requested a locksmith to install the system. Marcelino?
You say why it was installed? It's been over four years.
And you were waiting to?
Well, I was there on the location, but it was installed. So, I don't think.
Does it still work?
And so, they take it in time to see if it works.
So, is it, again, who is supposed to give direction here? I would say that if we spent the money and it's ready, my goodness, activate it.
Is that a motion? You got your marching orders, man.
Second.
All right. That was a motion by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 25. Consideration action authorizing the tax assessor-collector's office to issue permits on all coin-operated machines in the amount of one-fourth the rate the state of Texas imposes on each coin-operated machine within Cameron County as authorized by the Occupation Code, Chapter 2153 and 2153.451, coin-operated machines, and add additional personnel to administer the issuance of permits in compliance with set order. And go ahead.
Let me ask you a question before you even, you know, when I read that chapter of the code, does that include a bubble gum machine?
No, sir.
It's not a, that's not a pleasure coin operator?
No, the statute is.
You don't get pleasure out of bubble gum?
The statute is very specific as to what kind of machines require a permit either from the controller's office or if this is approved by the county.
Well, it says.
Sometime ago, the reason, the reason this was looked at, Judge and Commissioners, is sometime ago, when the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office started looking into the illegal activity on eight-liners, they looked for information as to who owned them, how many were in Cameron County, their locations. And we all discovered that none of these machines are accountable to anybody. In the correspondence that I wrote to the court, the controller's office acknowledges issuing 2,300 permits for 2,300 machines in Cameron County. But when we called the controller's office, they don't have and don't require the location of these machines. So, it's a big problem in Cameron County because these machines are not accountable to anybody. And what we're trying to do is set up a system where we can tie in the eight-liners or these type of machines to the real estate account, personal property accounts. That way, all individuals involved in this type of activity, we will have a database to share with law enforcement agencies.
Well, if you notice, the agenda item was presented by Mr. Seguero, Mr. Villalobos, and our sheriff. Sheriff, would you like to say anything at this time?
Thank you. Good evening, Judge. Good evening, Commissioners. Definitely no question about it. Many times, we have reports of some illegal activities on these eight-liners, which happens many, many times. And when we take action on it, then we try to find out who the owner is. Usually, the individual that is present at a particular time tells us, well, we don't know who the machines are owned, who owns the property, where he can be located, whether he owns it personally or the real property. And then we need to serve him with some papers to go ahead and prosecute him in court. We have a hard time finding those people, Judge. So, it takes us a long, long time. In the meantime, we have to store those machines. And they may be stored and we're paying a fee on those machines until we discover who the real owner is so we can present it to the district court, and I'm sorry, to the district attorney for prosecution. So, it's a time-consuming. By doing this, we know exactly who owns it and if we take any action and confiscate these machines, we go directly to the owner, serve him the paper, and then we can present him, you know, to the district attorney for further prosecution. So, we really support this particular program. I think it's great. I think it's great, not because of the money you're going to collect, but because we know who the machines belong to so that we can take the proper action when deemed necessary.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Billby?
Judge and Commissioners, Mr. Villalobos is here also. I'm here on his behalf in support of this. We have the same need for this information. We're charged with enforcing the Penal Code section with regard to illegal gambling. So, having this information will play an important role in our ability to better enforce these laws and help us when we do enter into agreements and settlements to try to keep these machines out of the county, out of the state of Texas. So, we strongly support the development of this information.
Why would we not want to do it? Excuse me? Why would we not want to do this?
We don't want to do it. We'd like to do it. We just haven't taken the action.
Why would anybody not want to do this? I mean, I think it makes sense. I mean, that's what I'm.
Well, if you're an owner of the machines, I guess you wouldn't want to do it, right?
I don't own a machine. All right.
Motion for approval?
Move Commissioner, move Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Discussion?
Why only one-fourth?
That's what, that's what the statute allows.
That's it?
The state of Texas collects $60 and the law, the statute allows counties to collect 25% or one-quarter of what they charge. So, it's $15 per machine.
Okay, so that's a statute.
You're following the statute.
That's a statute, yes. Okay. Also, there's a letter there from the county auditor in regards to the revenues that would be generated by this activity.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking at $100,000 a year?
And where would that money go?
Tony already has new personnel.
I'm glad it's going to go to public works.
When the DA did a seizure on the eight-liners that were earlier this year, we looked at the tax accounts of that property owner and looked for property that was relating to personal or business, personal business property. And none of these seized eight-liners were in the, on the tax roll. And so, and I had this discussion with the tax assessor-collector at the time, that there are a number of eight-liners and there's a lot of business, personal property out there that remains untaxed. Now, businesses who operate are required to render their personal property information to the appraisal district to be taxed. But a lot of these are not reported to the appraisal district. In fact, in what you see, some of the information that the tax assessor-collector provides, only the appraisal district had, what, 519? Is that?
They, according to their records, the appraisal district has approximately.
551.
551 machines recorded in their, in their system. And that's a big difference from what the state numbers are. So, we can see there's a big difference out there and.
We estimate that there's probably $6,000 to $8,000.
So, the state does not require the exact location of where these machines are at?
No, sir.
Anywhere in the county?
Anywhere in the county.
So.
Anywhere in the state.
At 6,000 machines.
The same machine permit can put him anywhere in the state of Texas?
Yes.
And it can be moved around?
It can be moved around. And with this, with this division that we're trying to implement, machines cannot be relocated or moved without a permit, without notifying my office.
Okay.
And if machines are seized and sold or auctioned by the DA or the sheriff's office and they're asked that these machines have to be moved out of the county, this would be one way of knowing if that particular machine comes back into.
In other words, you'll have, you'll have a tracking system?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. How much are you going to authorize, Mr. Yen?
So, at six, there's an estimate between 6,000, 8,000 machines.
Let's not get into the certification of revenues issue at this time, all right?
Well, but we have to because we're going to add personnel to administer this program for Tony.
You're correct on that issue.
All right. How much are you going to certify, Mark?
There's between 6,000 and 8,000 machines estimated out there. At the low end, 6,000, at $15 a machine, that's 90,000. I would go at 90% and say, well, we'll get 81,000. But tax assessor-collector is only asking for 70,000. So, the exact cost of the program is what I'll certify. And any surplus then will be tracked and either applied to the program or applied to where the commissions court wants to work with.
I just.
And you also.
70,000. Personnel, okay?
You also know, Tony, do you already know the number of personnel you will need to implement this?
According to the agenda and my proposal, I'm requesting two individuals, a compliance officer at 32,000 and a clerk at 19,000 plus. That's a total of $70,000. That includes fringe benefits.
Fringe?
Fringe.
So, this letter I wrote back in July 5th, I was prepared to certify 70,000 then, and I'm still prepared to certify 70,000 this year for that program.
Why did I miss that?
That's why I was asking for certification.
We had a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? If not, do I hear all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Tony, thank you very much for leading this, okay?
Can I ask a question? Sheriff, when you seize these machines, like, do we have any right now still in the county's possession?
Do we have any one confiscated?
Any of these confiscated machines in our possession?
No, the district attorney and our office sold the recent ones. And some of the monies that we collected, we paid the auctioneer, goes to what is commonly known as a fund ID. That's a specific fund that district attorney has. And the sheriff has to be used by the sheriff or the district attorney, either for overtime or to hire people or to buy equipment. And that's what we did. The last one that we did, I think the sheriff's office collected something like 50,000, if I remember correctly, the district attorney, 35,000. But in the meantime, we also had to have them store for quite a period of time and we had to pay that. So, this is one of the reasons we're trying to implement this program.
And is that because you were not able to identify the owners?
Precisely. It took us quite a while to identify the owners and to serve them with the proper paperwork. They have, they have the option to go before the district attorney and try to negotiate to see if they're here with the machines. Or if they do, hire an attorney, you know, to present that in court and that the court decide whether those machines were, you know, illegally being used or we can go ahead and take hold of those machines. So, it stays time-consuming.
So, I take it they decided not to claim them?
Sometimes they don't. But it still takes time for them to go ahead and write. They have to give us a written letter to that effect before we can take any action. And then we have to go before the district court for they go ahead to award them either to the district attorney or to the sheriff's office or to the cities who are involved in those particular confiscational machines.
Thank you, Sheriff.
What are you going to call this group of people, Tony? The gaming?
No, no, just a compliance officer for.
Gaming compliance officer?
Gaming compliance officer. No, it's a, the title, and as a matter of fact, we do have a job description for both individuals. They'll be submitted to the Personnel Department. It'll be a compliance officer and a clerk under the compliance officer, and they'll be working under.
Do they have to be licensed or, you know, commissioned under anyone in particular?
No, the individual that we're, the, the, the job title does not call for a peace officer. It's, we're going to be looking for somebody that has experience with code enforcement, somebody that's dealt with ordinances, that has worked with, with this, not this type of, because we're not going to find anybody that's done this type of work. But somebody that's worked with either cities or other counties or other divisions that have this type of expertise in enforcing codes.
Or a previous owner of one of these facilities?
I don't think so.
A previous owner of.
Previous, no. But, but we'll make sure we get the right individual for this program.
You'll have to to make it work.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Tony. Anything else? No? Item 17. Presentation of title change for Tony Rysinger from County Marine Extension Agent to County Extension Coastal and Marine Resources and to present Commissioners Court a check representing value of volunteer time for extension-supported programs in Cameron County for 2006. I think they're here. Move to table.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo to table item 17. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. That item is tabled. Item for discussion, action, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge and Commissioners, on the salary schedules, it's the third page from the, from the end, there is a correction that I'll hand to the county clerks. Under the Colonia Access Program for the, there was two positions that were approved a couple of weeks ago. The secretary's position shows at 20,000, it should be 20,900.
How much?
And I'll do that.
Why would a construction superintendent be paying, paid less than a foreman?
Actually, I posed that question to, with the support of the staff and the way it was presented.
Yeah, the reason the salary for that foreman was set at that rate is because that individual's going to be handling the Cameron Park project. That's a lot more difficult project. We need an individual with a lot more experience. It's going to include, although we're not going to be doing the relocation of utilities, but we will be working hand in hand with PUB. We will be working with a contractor that'll lay the curb and gutter for the county. So, it just requires a lot more experience in that position.
So, the construction superintendent would need to know those things to be able to manage them?
The individual that we have right now, he's working on the other Colonia projects, you know, the smaller projects that we have. The other project that we've started a couple of weeks ago is the Olmito Project. And in there, we have the same, you know, it's a lot more difficult project, a lot more coordination with different entities.
The budget amendments are, excuse me, the first two pages are line item transfers between various departments, just moving monies between different line items so the departments can operate. The first one, the county clerk judicial, was actually an action item that was taken by the court. The county clerk had approved to transfer lab salaries to extra help in the court. This is just reflecting that. On the second page, under the county judge's office, that's just undoing the budget amendment that was previous done and putting the monies back within the judge's office and moving the monies back into emergency management.
Javier, hold on. I have a question on the one before that, on the constable precinct drug forfeiture The salary schedule shows an annual base salary of $21,830.
Annually?
Ten pay periods.
Correct.
Okay? On the, on the agenda item, though, it shows only an $8,396 increase. Is that the same thing that we're looking at?
It's the same thing. When the, I believe it was the meeting of December 26th that the court approved, I believe the constable came and asked for a, for this position to be created, and it was to be paid out of Fund 90. When I was setting up the salary schedule and looking at the available resources within Fund 90, they had requested prior to that to allocate some of the funds that they had for a K-9 program and then also for some overtime monies for the deputies that are working on.
Okay, but hold on.
But, so there was only so much resources left. And so, what's showing there, the 8,396, is at that rate of pay of the 20,900 which was requested. But that's only going to, there's only enough funds in order for that position to be funded through, for those 10 pay periods, which was through, I think it's May 24th.
Okay. Well, let me go back.
Okay.
When, when you go back and you look at this item that the court approved, so you're telling me that even though the salary schedule shows 21,830, that.
Annually.
Yeah, annual, okay? The 8,000 is what, what. The 8,000 is what, what they have in Fund 90?
Well, for salaries, 'cause then that's taken out what they had requested before and for the fringe.
Okay. But tell me where the, I'm gonna ask you two questions. One, where does the 10,000 overtime number come from?
It was just what they had requested. They do have monies within their Fund 90, Fund balance, which has been carried over from last year.
Okay, that was my second, the Fund balance here is going from 12,000 to 46, okay? And it's increasing by 28, to 28,743.
Right.
So that Fund balance is representing Fund 90 monies? Is that what that is?
Correct, that's Fund 90.
Okay.
For the constable.
So it's decreasing by 16,000 in that?
It's, it's, correct, the Fund balance. Actually, the 28,000 is all that they had as of September 30th, 2006.
Okay. So if we're going to fund this through Fund 90 for five months, does the employee that's gonna be hired know that it's only for five? I guess what I'm getting at, and what has been done traditionally is, is they do Fund 90 monies or grant monies, and they come back because, you know, this is a great project that's working well, I need for the court to fund it, and somehow it ends up getting stuck back on general fund.
Yeah.
And I'm not...
I wasn't, I wasn't here that, when that actually took place, so I don't know how it was presented to the court.
Well, I saw the meeting.
But I did relay that to the constable's office, that there was only enough funds to pay for this lot through May 24th.
It was approved by the court to be paid with Fund 90 monies till it ran out.
Till it ran out.
And that's it.
That's the way it was approved.
And that's it. So, so the constable knows that, you know, come June 1st, that he's out of money, and then that needs to be addressed in the following budget year. I guess what I'm trying to tell you is I don't wanna see it come back.
Unless he gets more Fund 90.
Unless he gets more Fund 90 money, that's fine, but I guess I don't wanna add more to the general fund that we have to.
Right. It will not be added unless the court specifically takes that action.
And he actually articulated that. He said, "We'll probably get another grant," but, you know, probably doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
That's right.
So he himself discussed that.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Javier?
The, the second set, or actually just a recognition of grants and also some donations that had come into the county for the Dancy Building, for the rededication ceremony, and recognizing that and putting the money for the expenditures for that.
I move to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Line item transfers and salary schedule.
That was moved by Commissioner Godza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Approval of county claims?
We have no additional claims to present except what was presented.
Can any member of the court have any conflicts or anything? Y'all looked at it? Anything cool? All right.
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Godza, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 20, consideration adoption of a resolution number 207R01001, supporting the, I don't know, Rhinesville Institute Delmar Heights Self-Help Project, Delvia?
Red Centerville.
Judge, Commissioners, Commissioner Wood asked me to put this on, had been given to his precinct, because the Delmar Heights is in his precinct, and he just asked me to put it on for your consideration.
This, this particular institute has been helping in that community in years past, and this is the help with the Los Fresnos Military Highway Water Corporation in a local agreement to possibly provide and look at providing wastewater services for that Delmar area.
All right. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'm familiar with that, because it's been ongoing.
Motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Godza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, any opposed? I mean, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 21, consideration possible approval of the partial release of the retainage held in the Dancy Building project to J.R. Jones in the amount of 377,236 dollars.
Judge, Commissioners, this is an item, consideration to release, a partial release of the retainage that we have on hand for J.R. Jones Construction.
What does that leave in the balance after we do this?
Do you have a handout?
Delvia should have included a letter that I wrote to everyone.
No, I don't, I don't have it.
Well, at least not in my package.
Yes, we, we send that out before the holidays on the 14th.
Can you just tell me?
Okay, real quick. What this is, is the, the total amount of retainage and money owed to J.R. Jones Construction is 447,758.40. That's the total amount that is due currently to the contractor. What I'm asking is to withhold 70,522.40 on items that I think they're pending that Easton needs to complete. In order for him to, for us to consider this release, go ahead and make payment to some of the subcontractors that are requesting payments, since you have moved in already, the dollar amount that is being considered for payment to the contract this time is 377,236 dollars.
Where are we with all the, where's Mazzalino's here? Mazzalino, we've talked about this before, where are we with all the signage on all the doors and all that stuff? Instead of, you know, I'm asking where all the signage is. We got paper things hanging on the doors. It looks kinda tacky.
If I can address that, the, the item on the signage, and that's one of the items for the 70,000 dollars we're withholding until that gets installed and completed, is that we've been working, the contractor's been working, my office has been working with county staff in trying to make decisions as to what the types of signage, the wording of the signage has been. We've been working on this for about three, four months. We still don't have a response from the county at this time as to what that signage needs to read in front of each of the offices. So therefore, I felt that rather to press this on, this, the item, line item on that item is 10,000 dollars. That's how much it's gonna cost to put up the signage. So if we do not have the contractor install the signage, the county has 10,000 dollars to spend on that signage. And that's, this is one of the items of the 70,000 dollars that I'm withholding. I don't wanna give that up at this point.
So signage has not been ordered, is what you're telling us?
Signage has not been ordered, because we have not received any information from the county as to what the signage needs to read. We've been working with staff for three, four, four, five months, actually.
Oh.
So it...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Again, who is accountable for getting that information?
I've only been here a week, man. I can tell you how it's working. Play me. Here's, 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 here's what I believe that we need to be doing, okay? Because, I mean, we've got a beautiful facility, and it just looks tacky, having a piece of white paper with, with somebody that ran off a copy machine hanging on the door.
I totally agree with that.
I don't believe that we need to put individual people's names on the doors, 'cause that, that's very fluid. But I think if, if we've decided that, you know, where, you know where Human Resources is, well, we can do Human Resources. We know where Commissioner Precinct 1 is and Precinct 2 is. We know the county judge's office. I mean, that's, you just put that generic term. You don't put my name or anybody else's name, because that way, if there is some fluidness at some point in the future, you don't have to go back and wipe out anything, you know, or have to redo this thing and expend the money. I think that if you're just, if you just identify the office, county clerk, tax assessor collector, whatever, but we need to get on that. I think Mazzalino's one of the first things that we, that we addressed early on.
Judge, if I can get just one person, I, I mean, I'm not trying to name names here, but I've been working with the county, the previous judges' assistants, and right now, to this day, we don't have that. Now, if you, assign me someone from the county, I'd be more than happy to work with this new person to address exactly what you just want to do.
I think our county administrator should work with him and get it done.
Yeah, I'll get with staff, and we'll give instructions to your architect in the next couple of days.
And maybe just run your draft by the judge. I think we need to see it, but we don't like it.
Or involve Melissa in the process, Mr. Sepulveda?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get maybe somebody from my office involved, and also come up with, with the wording for each. Now, you know what, where the offices are, come up with the wording for everybody. I mean, how simple, not that difficult, you know?
It's not that difficult. It really isn't.
Just spell check, and off you go. Send that copy to every member of the court so that they have it, so they're, you know, they do their spell check as well. And let's do that. I mean, that just, you know, doesn't make sense to be going this long with paper things hanging on doors.
I'll get with Pete, like, tomorrow, and then we'll get together on this list.
Okay, please.
And please check the spelling.
Correct, yeah, make sure we help.
That's a teaching coming up. Pete, I have a question for you. Before we release these funds, have we gone through the building and make sure that every contractor has completed the work?
What we have done, Commissioner Benavides, is we have gone through a series of punch lists, or called punch lists. We have developed a series of booklets, if you will, that we have given the contractor. We have gone through a second and a third review of that list. We're really down to the basic list that you see in this letter that was given to you. This is the only items that are pending at this point. Now, with this release of funding of the, of the, of the retainage, it will give the contractor the benefit of paying the subcontractors that he owes money to. We still have a performance bond. That performance bond is not gonna be released until everything, everything on this list has been completed, and we will have that as a carrot for the contractor, saying, "You give us all the paperwork that you have completed, give it us for review, and then we'll give you the final check."
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
What is, I'm looking at the withholdings, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with the credits. The withholdings?
Yes.
The audio video, what is that?
We still have some items here that, the audiovisual system here, that we need to consider in finalizing. We're working with a consultant, B A I, that the county contracted.
Is 2,000 dollars enough?
What we have is yes, but we have the items that are pending at this point, yes. That's what my recommendation is on the pending items that we have. But everything else, I mean, it's an operation, it's working.
What is security access control?
We have, those are items for the, the card readers that we have. We need to go, make sure, we need to tweak it a little bit more in order for me to finalize that approval.
Where do we have card readers?
At all the entrances. All the employees, as they come in, they are, have a card readers in order to open and lock the doors.
In this building?
Yes.
Except during the day or what?
Well, during the day, they're open, 'cause you cannot lock the public building. That's only for the evening and late at night.
So then anyone can come in after hours with a cart?
With a cart, yeah, and that's recorded in the computerized system.
It's not activated at this point.
I'm sorry?
It's not activated at this point.
It's not activated at this point.
What was beeping all day long today?
The alarm system makes the elevator.
Oh, God, it was annoying. Okay.
I'll let you read it, Mr. Se...
Are there any other questions that you have?
Any other questions for Mr. Ruiz? Do I hear a motion to approve the partial release of the retainage held in the Dancy Building project to J.R. Jones in the amount of 377,236 dollars? That was moved by Commissioner Godza. That was a second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say is, next time, make sure to include that with our stuff.
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, review it. Item 22, consideration adoption of a resolution number 2007R01002, authorizing the county auditor to execute on the county's behalf the federal tax certificate and the Internal Revenue Services Form 8038-G entitled "Information Return for Tax Exempt Governmental Obligations", both of which documents relate to the county's issuance of its Certificates of Obligation Series 2007. Delvia? Luchers?
I put this on to have the court consider whether they wanted to give authority to Mark Yates, the auditor, to sign some of these documents, in particular, the two listed there. They were prepared by our bond counsel, Paul Mark.
Mark, are you all right with signing that?
Yes, initially, looking at the documents, I didn't find the explicit authority to allow the county auditor to sign these documents, even though they had been styled for me to sign.
All the pages there?
Well, some of the pages were a signature page with no, no verbiage on it. I didn't sign that particular document, because there's nothing to sign except the signature page. But everything else I have, have or agreed to sign.
All right. So moved.
Second.
That was a move by Commissioner Godza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item carries. Item number 23, consideration authorization to award request for qualifications to H N T B for Engineering and Design Services, Laureles Park, R I Q number 06092, and authority to negotiate agreement?
So moved.
That was moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion?
Yes. They're gonna negotiate an agreement, and I would like to ask Mr. Sepulveda to be part of that negotiation.
Any objection from any member of the court?
Fine.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item number 26, consideration action regarding the county's legislative agenda for the 80th Texas Legislative Session. It's in your packet, I think this was adopted about a month or so ago.
Yes, but I guess this is a draft. I found some misspelled words.
David, yes, here.
David?
Uh, David.
It's a draft, it's a document.
Okay, good. So I'm sure you can spot them on your own.
I did catch those, but we didn't put them, we didn't put the new, in your bag.
There's one item that, that I didn't see listed, and possibly because maybe it wasn't brought to our attention at the time, but it's under criminal jurisprudence? Well, no, it's right there, I'm sorry. 21, it is listed. Yeah. I had not seen it.
This is an item that we're gonna put on the agenda, we're gonna place it every week. The first 30 days of the session, there's really not a lot going on. Committee assignments are not given till after that timeframe, so we don't anticipate anything the first 30 days, but nonetheless, we'll have it on the agenda every week, just in case. We did, when we were meeting with the chief of staff for Governor Perry, they did, and we also met with the transportation director and the senate liaison for the governor, they did mention, since Cameron County is the leader in rail relocation projects, that they will look at us for any committee hearings related to rail relocation and other transportation projects.
If we have any adjustments or addendums to the legislative budget, feel free to contact us, so we can get it on that, just get over to, who am I ready to get over to? Tony, question?
Yes, that was my question to the court, that I have a list of, of things that I feel should be changed in the, either the motor vehicle tax code, the motor vehicle transportation code or the tax code, and that's why I'm asking if we can...
Yeah, why don't you give that to Mr. Sepulveda, and have him take a look at it? Y'all get together and just add it to the, to the agenda, if that's all right?
I've got Jesse Garcia, my chief deputy, and Rick, my administrative assistant, working on these, on these changes that we would like, so if you have any questions.
Is, is that being supported through the Texas Association of Tax Collectors also?
Sure.
Are those issues being supported by the Texas Association of Tax Assessor Collectors also?
Not, not at this point, there haven't been...
Because usually, that's a good avenue also to help push legislation through.
They won't get a copy, the, the committee will get a copy of the changes that we would like. Yes.
Because I know on item 21, in discussing with Mr. Vialloos, that particular item, and how much money we are not collecting because we're not statutorily allowed to collect, but yet the adult probation department does collect those monies, there's a potential for us to be able to encourage pre-trial diversion and also participate in some revenues that currently we're missing. And I know that their TACC, or the Texas Association of District Attorneys, is looking at that particular item also.
There's a, I don't think this has it broken down, but we'll, there'll be items here that we're gonna look to legislators to present and move forward on our behalf. Then there'll be issues that we'll monitor, and then there'll be issues that we'll support. And so we plan on breaking this down into probably three different tiers, you know, legislation that we want somebody to carry on our behalf, legislation that we'll support, and legislation that we'll monitor.
Well, we need to move on the one that we want them to introduce on our behalf, quickly.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve our, let's say, agenda with the adjustments, with the inclusion of Tony Seguita's items?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item carries. Item 27, consideration approval of the legislative budget. Obviously, if we're going to be going to Austin on our behalf, we have to incur some expenditures. Pete has provided a preliminary budget totaling $80,000 in...
$30,000.
Thirty, I'm sorry. $30,000. Sorry, Pete.
He'll take it.
I'm assuming...
We can change that.
Okay, I'm assuming this is just the Austin...
Right.
Okay, so anything having to go to Washington, that's something different?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion for approval, but also with the understanding that for them to come back to us if this number changes. I mean, the most important thing is that you represent us well.
Yeah, I think this is a maximum number, you know, I think it probably...
What's the funding source?
I think...
Judge's office.
No, I think the budget officer, it's either $18,000 or $20,000 that he can find a funding source, and then the balance will be from the Department of Transportation budget, from our existing budget.
Correct.
Each year in the past, the county funded a portion of the administrative services for the judicial region. Since Judge Hester's passing, that position has now been appointed, I believe, to a judge in Wessex County.
Judge Panyales.
So we no longer have that obligation, so there are funds available that we had budgeted for the match for those services, so there's between $18,000 and $20,000 available there that could be utilized for this. I'll just have to do the budget amendment to set a line transfer.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget?
We have a motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 29, consideration possible approval of legal services agreement with Joseph Graham to provide representation for the indigent defendants of the 103rd District Court. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I got a question before we vote.
Okay.
There's a number of these in our packet.
Right.
Are these the same as last year?
Commissioner Garza, three of them, the first three are for Judge Janet Leal, she's the newly-elected judge for the 103rd, so...
I should say in dollar amount.
Yes, sir.
It's $6,000 total, right?
$6,000, yes, sir, for the three in the district court. And then the amounts that were for Judge Arturo McDonald are still the same amounts that were used by the prior judge, I believe, for the two that he's appointed.
So it's really 29 through...
You want to take them all together, Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, this item 20...
I'll take 29, 30, and 31 together.
Okay, let me read them. Item 30, consideration possible approval of legal services agreement with Daniel Mora III to provide representation for the indigent defendants of the 103rd District Court. Item 31, consideration possible approval of legal services agreement with Peter Gilman to provide representation for the indigent defendants of the 103rd District Court. Do I hear a motion on item 29, 30, and 31?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner, I'm, okay, 29 was already Commissioner Tamayo, Commissioner Benavides. You want to do that, also do 30 and 31? Okay, we'll do that for item 29, 30, and 31. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 32, consideration possible approval of legal services agreement with Hector Gatsa to provide representation for the indigent defendants of the county court at law number one. Do I hear a motion for approval? Same question, Commissioner Gatsa?
Same question.
Delvia?
Yes, it's the same amount.
All right.
Same amount? And same individual?
No.
No, it's...
They're different individuals, but it's still...
Two different individuals.
But the expense is the same.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
You want to take item 32 and 33 together? It's the same court.
It's two for county court at law number one.
Well, they're both county court at law number one.
Yes, but they, their salary equals what for one?
Correct.
Well, let's just take them. 32, consideration possible approval, okay, already, do I hear a motion, item 32?
So moved.